If everyone would please take their seats, we're going to get started here right away. Thank you. I would like to call to order the regular board meeting of Tuesday, March 5, 2019. As is our custom, we begin our board meetings with a singing of our national anthem. We are very honoured today to have a video of students from the Deer Run School Choir singing "Oh Canada." I would ask that everyone to please stand and follow the lead of our students. We would like to acknowledge the traditional territories and oral practices of the Blackfoot Nations, which includes the Sichica, the Pekinai, the Guinean. We also acknowledge the Tsusina and Stony Nakota First Nations, the Métis Nation Region III, and all people who make their homes in the Treaty VII region of southern Alberta. I would like to take this opportunity to welcome all of our staff and public in attendance at this meeting, representing our stakeholder groups. I would like to recognise Bob Cocking from the Alberta Teachers' Association Local 38, Jenica Capathorn from the Calgary Board of Education Staff Association, Michelle Harvey Elementary School Principals' Association, Laurie Cooper and Sherry Goodfellow from the Senior High Schools Principals' Association. Thank you for joining us today. Please also welcome the Grade Three students from Kenneth D. Taylor School and their teacher, Mrs. Bogensberger. Students have moved their classroom to the historical Beltline District and downtown. Their week has them investigating the question, "What is our ripple effect? How do our actions impact those around us?" Through examining perspectives from people, urban design, and community organisations, students will gain an understanding of how actions create intended and unintended consequences, and how they might create change. They met with Acting Superintendent of Learning Sidney Smith today, and they will meet with Trustee Hurdman on Thursday. Would you like to stand up and give a little wave? Thank you so much for joining us today. Our first item of business is to approve the agenda for today's meeting. Ms. Minor, do you have any changes that need to be noted?
Madam Chair, there are no changes to today's agenda.
Could I have a motion that the agenda be approved as submitted? Trustee here.
I shall move.
Thank you. There's a lot of excitement there. All right, and...
Sorry?
All those in favour? That's carried unanimously. Thank you. All right, as there are no awards or recognitions scheduled for today, our next business deals with results focus. Today on our agenda is the annual monitoring of Results III: Citizenship. Chief Superintendent, would you please introduce the report?
Thank you, Madam Chair, trustees. This afternoon's monitoring report for Results III: Citizenship outlines our results as an organisation in ensuring that each CBE student becomes a responsible citizen. This year's report highlights results related to the 2017-18 report cards, along with the first set of results for new indicators related to the CBE Student Survey, and anecdotal stories from CBE high school students. The 2018-19 CBE Student Survey was administered to over 74,000 students in the CBE, students in grades 5, 6, 8, 9, 11, and 12, and provides a great deal of insight into the lives and learning of our students, with their own voice and point of view. Specifically, we are very proud of the results in the areas of the following: Students demonstrating understanding of social studies issues, information, and ideas; Success rate 94.7% overall success; Students demonstrating respect and appreciation for diversity; A very high success rate, 98.9%; Students working collaboratively and effectively with other students, at 97% success rate. We also noticed that we will continue to work on the areas of global citizenship, and in particular, providing students opportunities in two areas in particular: Continuing school volunteerism and advocacy, and also increasing understanding of national and global issues and their role in the larger societal context. At this time, trustees, please join me in welcoming one of our students to the boardroom. Isa is from Nelson Mandela High School. She's present here. She will speak to us on how she and her peers have experienced opportunities for growth in their understanding of being a positive contributing citizenship, I'm sorry, citizen, as part of the CBE learning programmes. My pleasure to welcome Isa to the microphone.
Good afternoon, Chair Dennis, Superintendent's team, and other honoured guests. I have experienced citizenship in many ways at school, including opportunities where we've had to learn a lesson together. For example, as a way to build awareness, students in my high school were given a presentation on impaired driving and how we can make smart choices. One of the clips presented by the Mothers Against Drunk Driving representative was a dramatisation of a real story in which a group of friends died from a car crash after the car flips. A few individuals found the clip amusing, and they began to applaud, resulting in other students participating not knowing the reason for applause. While a few students did clap, many chose not to, and led by example to help the misguided students realise their actions, which were corrected by the mad representative as the presentation went on. Afterwards, students in my English class shared their perspective on why such an event could take place. We explored how everyone has their own coping mechanisms, and applause could just be the escape from their own personal reality as an individual. As a collective whole, we did acknowledge the event as an opportunity to talk about empathy, mental health, and being selfless by understanding that everyone has a story, and the most we can do is respect one another. Interventions were taken by the administrators in which a video of the principal was played in every class, highlighting how applause was unacceptable in the situation, why it was wrong, and how we can work towards learning from our mistake as a collective. Hearing from the administrators definitely helped students realise how serious the situation was, and how it was not to be repeated again. As a school, we learned from our mistake and worked on raising awareness as to why applauding and joking could seriously hurt and offend someone who has suffered in the past. Students talked to each other and to teachers about the hardships they've gone through. As a school, by embracing our mistake, we worked on our goal of building a safe, welcoming environment for the future. We set ourselves up for success by creating and maintaining positive relationships with our fellow students, understanding why the situation was wrong, and proactively working as a collective to learn and grow. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Isa. Chair Dennis and trustees, in 2017-18, in accordance with our modified student survey processes, Results III was administered as a major focus in the CBE Student Survey. In 2018-19, citizenship would be a minor focus. As stated in the board meeting on March 6, 2018, administration committed to have the 2018-19 Student Survey address the aspects of citizenship from Policy Section 3.1. At this time, we welcome your questions related to 2017-18 Monitoring Report for Results III: Citizenship. My colleagues are present to respond to specific questions.
I'd just add our thanks also to Izzy for your presentation today. It's always a great opportunity here from our students, so thank you so much for sharing today. Trustees have received and reviewed the Chief Superintendent's report regarding the annual monitoring of Results III: Citizenship. It is now the board's responsibility to consider the report as evidence of reasonable organisational progress in this results area. I now invite any trustee who has questions about this monitoring report to offer them to the Chief Superintendent. Trustee Adams?
Since they all got to put their hand up faster than I did to approve the agenda, I thought I'd put my hand up first for questions. I'm just going to start on 4-5, and I'm just thinking, question two. It talks a lot about democratic rights and responsibilities. And I've noticed, as we look down on some of the question themes, that some of them are quite low, in the 40s and in the 50s. Now, I know at my house, I tend to rule by dictatorship, so I'm kind of curious about what we mean by democratic rights and responsibility in the classroom, if you can just give us a little bit of an explanation there. And then maybe if you can talk a little bit as to why some of these numbers are a little bit low. Thank you.
Chair Dennis, through to trustee Adams. I'm going to ask Director Wood to respond to your question.
Chair Dennis. It's, okay, through to trustee Adams. So there are nine questions that feed into this survey measure. As you pointed out, a number of them are a little on the lower side. The ones other than help classmates are actually grouped in pairs. One where the student is asked to, on a scale of strongly agree through to strongly disagree, respond to a statement. Other than to help classmates, the next two are related to when there's a decision being made in the school. You know, do I participate? Do I encourage others to participate? That's the next two. The ones after that all relate to volunteering in a school. So when there's an opportunity to volunteer, I volunteer, right? Or I encourage others to volunteer. When we have an opportunity to volunteer at a local level, so beyond the school but locally, do I volunteer? Do I encourage others to volunteer? And then nationally or internationally. So these are really related to the piece around how do you interact with others, and then how do you help others make decisions around positive contributions in a democratic society?
Follow up? Yeah, go ahead. Sorry, and I missed, and why do we think the numbers are so low?
Chair Dennis to trustee Adams, there probably are a number of factors that could contribute to that. One of them might be a time commitment. So if we're looking particularly around the volunteerism, while students may be able to help a classmate at school, they may have work responsibilities, or music programs, or sports, you know, hockey, that kind of thing, that means they don't have the time that they necessarily would need in order to volunteer, either beyond the school and into the community. So that could be one factor that might play into that.
Trustee Bradshaw?
Hi, my question's from page 4-5. The student survey results with the lowest results are in the area of learning community, especially around community and national global inclusivity. Although the results for school inclusivity are much higher, as these surveys are about student results, not the school, community, or global environment, can you expand on what students are reflecting about themselves when answering questions around inclusivity?
Chair Dennis, through to trustee Bradshaw. So really, the inclusivity questions are about having students join in. And the challenge for us at the district level is we don't have children to follow up with on those kinds of questions. So, you know, we would be definitely hazarding a guess as to why that is. I think Superintendent Smith alluded to a possible. And I think at a school level, we would look into those. We'd have conversations with our students to see, is it something that we need to do differently within the school environment? Or perhaps we're framing it in a way that might not be something that's understood? I think that that's sort of where we would go.
Trustee here?
Just sort of following up on some of the previous questions, taking a look at the, on page 4-5. Obviously, it would appear to me that democracy is one of those concepts that we uphold and we promote, and we believe is an essential part of the Canadian fabric. As mentioned, if we take a look at these results, community contribution 50.4%, community inclusivity 47.5%, I have a concern. Because I have a sense, like I've stated earlier, that this, to me, is an integral part of the Canadian fabric. And that if this is not shared by our students, I would presume, to some extent, they're reflecting things that they hear at home. And so my question is, are these results a bit of a concern for our teachers and the Calgary Public School District? And if not, why not? And if it is a concern, what are we doing to try to improve those results?
Chair Dennis, to trustee here. I think that I wouldn't disagree that we would want to see some of these results be higher. And so individual schools will be looking to see what it is that they can do to support these concepts and this work going forward. We also did a little bit of an environmental scan to see how different these were from other places across Alberta. And in most cases, we are at or above what would be reported in other places. So I would give that to you to say, I'm not sure this is completely out of line, but it would be something that we would continue to focus on in our schools to increase this over time.
Just a further comment on that. I appreciate that response. But I would simply state that it's not only a concern for Calgary Public, it's a concern for schools throughout the province of Alberta. And I believe it should be something we should be trying to... And I realise it's not going to be easy. But that's just one of the challenges that we have to face in trying to build a better province, better world, those kinds of things like that. Thank you.
So as Chair Hurdman has arrived, we will take a very short recess to switch chairs and begin again.
Thank you. I'll call us back to order.
Chair, Chair Hurdman, can I just finish another statement of a response to trustee here? This is the first time this particular survey has been given to students within the Calgary Board of Education. And so as part of this, we will also be reviewing how it is we're asking the questions, to look for reliability and validity on that, and use that to move forward as well.
If I can just comment, please understand that my remarks should not be taken as a request to refrain from asking tough questions, okay? Sometimes we have to face issues head-on and realise that there's a ways to go as we move towards making things better. So thank you very much.
Any further questions? Trustee Hurdlicka?
So if we look to page 4-19, but I guess before I move on, I just want to make a quick comment. If we look at these numbers on 4-5 and maybe some of the other results, and we say, you know, 50% or 47% are doing well in these areas, I think for many adults, if we ask them the same questions or did the same work, I wonder what kind of result we would get from them. So I know our goal is to do better, and we're working that for our students, but I think we also have to be realistic that these are also difficult and challenging, complex issues that we're asking our students to consider and think about. So I do agree, citizenship is really important to so many of us. I do agree with trustee here about that. But I think that there is that opportunity to think about those other things, too. My question, 4-19. When I look at environmental stewardship, and I just found it interesting that if we look at environmental conversations, it's one of the lowest in the entire report when we look at that understanding or agreeing with. I guess my question was just around, that's an interesting theme, environmental questions, and I'm wondering what it's made up of or where it comes from. That's my first question.
Chair Hurdman, through to trustee Hurdlicka. Having environmental conversations suggests that somebody is taking action. And so that's what that particular stream of questions was around, was are we talking about this, is it more than just about what I do? But am I actually having conversations either with my family, with classmates, or out in the community around this so that I'm bringing more people on board around this particular issue?
So as I recall from last year, we had some really great results around, indicators around the environment. So I guess I'm wondering, why would it be so low? Maybe some ideas, 48.3% of kids having this conversation is kind of low compared to what we've seen last year around the work and the understanding and the inspiration students are doing in regards to environmental initiatives and thinking about the environment. So I guess what I'm wondering in a roundabout way is, I'm not under... I'm wondering if you have any idea why this conversation is kind of an obstacle?
Chair Hurdman, through to trustee Hurdlicka. So up till last year, we only asked one question for every survey indicator that existed on any of the results policies. One question per survey indicator. Realising that that might not be giving us a full, broad spectrum of really what you wanted as trustees, we expanded that out into a new student survey where we asked more questions. And I think that may be one of the reasons, right? So when a student would have seen a question that would have said something along the lines of, "You take action to protect the environment, and you use resources responsibly", they might have thought, "Yeah, I use resources responsibly." However, now we've broken it into bits, and I think what we're seeing in the results is, when it comes to themselves, they're replying that, you know, 91.5% of the time, "I recycle, reuse, you know, I do my bit." The reduce, reuse, recycle with others is about them getting others to do that. So we have no problems as parents when our children don't make those decisions. What do you mean, you're putting that piece of paper in the garbage? It goes in the recycle bin, my love, right? But child to child, that's a little bit more challenging, right? Policing somebody else is a little bit more challenging. And learning the strategies on how to say that in a way that doesn't go sideways is adult work with our children. So I would suggest that that's there. And so the one around environmental conversation, so that's the next level, is, "I talk to my fellow students about ways we can protect the environment." You know, that's a tough conversation to have. Maybe even in Alberta, that's a tough conversation to have. Or maybe they don't need to do it because everybody's doing the right thing. So a lot of maybes.
Justy Davis? Just further to your comment on changing the survey, can you just tell us how many questions make up the summary measures? And how many questions are in the survey overall?
Chair Hurdman to trustee Davis. I'll try, and I'm sure my colleague will help me if I stumble. So there are anywhere between two and nine questions for each of the summary measures, depending on the summary measure. And depending on whether the focus is on R3, R4, or R5, the number of questions vary because we have a focus on different questions. So for grades 5 to 12, 5, 6, 8, 9, and 12, around R2, there are 18 questions. So, for grades five to 12, five, six, eight, nine, and 12, around R2, there are 18 questions. Around R3, grade 11 and 12, there are 31. Grade eight and nine, there are nine, or 11, sorry. In grade five and six, there are nine. For R4, all six grade levels, there are 11 questions. And for R5, for all six grade levels, there are eight questions. And then, depending on... For a major focus, there are a maximum of 25 questions for R2, 35 questions for R3, 39 questions for R4, and 25 questions for R5. That's a lot of data that I've just given out. I'm happy to provide that on a piece of paper for people if that's what they'd like to have.
Trustee Hare?
I'd like to return to page 419, taking a look at the column under Environmental Stewardship Summary Measure by Grade. And I notice overall agreement percentage, grade five, 76.1. And then, by grade nine, we go down to 60.1. I consider that a significant drop. I guess I would like to ask two questions. Any possible reasoning for this drop? And two, is it a matter of concern? And if it's a matter of concern, is there anything we can do about it?
Chair Hurdman to Trustee Hare. I would be taking a stab at why there is a drop. Could be, grade six are the oldest students in the building. They're taking on more responsibility at that age. At that stage in their lives, that's a big issue for them. And by the time we get to grade nine, yes, they are the oldest in the building as well, and there may be other issues at play for them, that being overt about that particular thing isn't part of what might be as acceptable in their social circles as it might be at grade six. So, I think there's a number of factors at play in there for students. I think we want students to be good stewards of our environment regardless of age and stage in their lives, and we will continue to work at the school level with students to promote that going forward.
Obviously, I'm pleased to hear that, and I do notice that it starts to creep up again in the following grades. But obviously, if we believe this is important, and I believe we do believe that, that it's important that we continually to emphasize it and promote it in the line of it's always a good thing to be environmentally conscientious. So, thank you.
And Chair Hurdman to Trustee Hare. Schools are one piece of the community that has influence over our students. So, we have to remember they are part of a family and they are part of a larger community. And so, I don't believe the sole responsibility for environmental stewardship resides in the classroom. We are a big part of that, and we would like to see that happening.
Trustee Davis?
Excuse me, Madam Chair, I have to respond. I just can't let this go. I think what Sydney has mentioned is, of course, the challenge that revolves throughout our schools. We are only one part of the learning system which our students bring to the school. The community, the home, all those things impact. Nonetheless, we have a role to play, and we have to relish that role and expand that role and move forward in the best interests of the community that we serve. So, thank you, but I do appreciate being reminded that we are not alone. Thank you.
Trustee Davis and then Trustee Hurdlicka.
So, on page 4-5, when we look at community contribution and community inclusivity, what community are we talking about there? Is that the school community? Is that the broader community? Which community?
Chair Hurdman to Trustee Davis. There are questions around the school inclusivity and school volunteerism, and so that's the school piece. Then we move to the community contribution and community inclusivity. So, that's we see as the broader community in Calgary. And then, we move to the national and global contribution and inclusivity, which would then go broader again.
So, just on that, when we're looking at community contribution, are we asking how much students are volunteering in their community? Like, what is it we're actually asking under that measure, both for community and national?
Chair Hurdman to Trustee Davis. For school volunteerism, we're asking the frequency that a student is... So, the volunteerism is about the frequency that they are volunteering. And the contribution is, it's on a sliding scale of, "I always contribute," or "I sometimes contribute," or "I never contribute." It's on that kind of a scale. So, there are two different scales. One's about, "Do I do it?" And the other one is about, "How frequently do I do it?"
Trustee Hurdlicka?
Just back to page 419 around the question thing, reduce, reuse, recycle for self. I'm wondering, because that's considerably higher than the other ones. I know within our schools, when I go visit schools, and even in this building, we certainly have and encourage recycling, composting. And kids in many schools, we have kids that are taking this initiative on, that they're patrolling the schools and they're having those conversations. And I guess I'm wondering, are we... What kind of impact is that having? Because we've helped build that within this school, from my perspective as a system. So, is that influencing, you know, the system push that this is where we need to go because we need to reduce rates and so forth? Is that system push impacting how kids are responding here?
Chair Hurdman through to Trustee Hurdlicka. Yes, it certainly is. And I would need to look at my colleague Superintendent Retton to know just what impact that's having on the amount of waste that is coming out of schools. But that certainly has had a big impact on what's happening in schools.
Chair Hurdman to Trustee Hurdlicka. I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but I think it would be safe to say that over the past 10 years or so, we've probably seen a diminishment of the waste produced, waste sent to landfill by well over 60%. This during a timeframe where student enrollment has increased by over 20%. So, I think when you put those two factors into consideration, it's pretty quite remarkable.
So, talking about the data itself, and I feel like I've already asked this question before, but I can't remember the answer to it. We talked about how we can't make a chi-square comparison for report card subject matter for the citizenship report card data, but we can for report card subject areas. So, why can we do one and not the other?
Chair Hurdman. So, with the report card data, for K-9, we look at students who got a 2, 3, 4 relative to the students who earned a 1, 2, 3, 4. So, we don't look at students who earned an assessment value of IPP in those data. And because we don't look, we don't include the students who earn an IPP, we are able to do a chi-square. The issue when we take a look at the results reporting, IPP is included in there, and because of that variability, we can't say for certain because their program study is a little different depending on their IPP. Because of that variability, we can't apply a chi-square.
So, just still on this 4-5, when I look at the indicator at the top, it indicates that we're looking for the percentage of high school students who report they exercise their democratic rights and responsibilities within the learning community. And then, when we go down, it looks like we're measuring the commitment to volunteering in their... Outside of the learning community, in their community and also nationally. And so, I'm just wondering, can you help me understand how that relates back to the indicator and what we would do with that information around how often kids are volunteering?
Chair Hurdman through to Trustee Davis. So, it is still within the school learning community. So, the ones around national, local, global, international are still related around when the school creates an activity or has an opportunity for an activity that may be leveraging volunteerism at a local, global, international level. How are you participating within your learning community? So, that's why those were included. This came out of... The decision to include those came out of the OECD work around citizenship, and how do we balance that when we're asking students relative to their learning environment? So, that's why we ended up including it there.
So, just for clarification, it is not measuring outside of the school environment. It's strictly just for the school.
Chair Hurdman through to Trustee Davis. It is school organized events that support school activity, so local, Alberta, national, international. So, it's also... It also is supported through the We Day movement, where you do something local, you do something national, you do something international as organized by the school.
Chair Hurdman to Trustee Davis, just to add to that, so a school could organize to go out into the community to volunteer, that would be included. If somebody was doing it as part of a family contribution, that's not what's being asked here.
Trustee Dennis?
So, I have a question, I guess, related to some of the questions that Trustee Davis has been asking around, so 528. But I'm just, I guess I want to be corrected if I'm trying to create a relationship between some of the data that doesn't exist. So, looking at page 528 and 728 regarding community contribution is at 50.4%. And then, on 728, community volunteerism at 79.7. And the same thing with school volunteerism, 55.2, and school volunteerism frequency at 71.8. So, you've explained the sliding scale and, you know, how the different questions are answered. I guess I would have expected to see a greater, I guess, a connection that those percentages would be more equal. I was just surprised to see that much of a gap between those answers. So, I guess my question is, am I trying to create a relationship that doesn't exist between that data? Or did we expect to see that kind of a gap?
Chair Hurdman through to Trustee Dennis. So, again, this came out of the OECD work on citizenship. And when we looked at those two questions, we too went, when we read the OECD work and some work that surrounds it, we went, "Those are asking the same thing, so why would we ask the same question twice?" And sometimes you do that on a survey. You ask the same question in different ways to see if there's some reliability. But the difference is, and I'm still struggling a little bit with it, but again, you know, referring to research, defer to people who are smarter than I am. So, the difference is, is if we take a look at the comparison between school volunteerism on 4.5 and school volunteerism frequency on 4.7. So, 4.5, the question, the specific question that's asked is, "When there's an opportunity to volunteer within my school to help others, I join in." And students respond with a strongly agree, agree, disagree, strongly disagree. So, that's the scale there. For the other question, it is, "How often do you volunteer your time to help out in your school?" And so, it's an always, often, sometimes, never. So, it's... One is about an agreement, which is a bit different than the frequency, so the always, often. So, the research would tell us that we would expect to see something different there. Our goal would be to have those closer together, I would say.
So, looking at page 4-12, when we look at the bottom under question theme, and it asks about global issues and global current events. I'll just wait for you to find the page. And so, can you help me understand what we're measuring there? Is it their knowledge about these things or what exactly we're asking?
Chair Hurdman through to Trustee Davis. So, global issues, they're responding on an agreement scale to the following statement. "I talk to people about issues like peace and climate change." And for the global current events, they're responding to the statement, and again, an agreement scale. "I talk to people about what's happening in other countries."
Just following up on the previous question, 410 and 412. On 410, we concentrate on local and national citizenship. And then, on 412, we talk about global. I have to assume that when we take a look at those issues, we talk about our responsibilities in that regard. And of course, to some extent, they can be controversial in the sense that local or national interests may not really connect with global interests. How do we handle that kind of thing? Or how do we advocate for one or the other? Or do we simply present it as things to chat about?
Chair Hurdman to Trustee Hare. I would suggest that it's very school-dependent on how they chat about it in their individual schools. And we certainly wouldn't want to say one was more important or less important than another. I think it would be more about what the school and the students were generating as ideas, that then that would become a bigger part of the conversation where action might be taken. So, it could well be in response to student interest and student desire to participate.
If I could just follow up, and I have to understand that certain issues are complex and that there can be individual ways of perceiving them and looking at them. And I think it's important that our students understand that there are different perspectives in regards to what is in people's interests, both locally, nationally, and internationally, and both long-term and short-term. So, once again, I'm not saying we stay away from these issues, but we have to understand the concept of perspective pluralism, if we wish to use that kind of term there. But I certainly see, if we take a look, our numbers in regards to local and national are much higher than they are in regards to global. And I would think that's almost natural, okay? I think it's still something we have to address, but to me, it's something I can understand. It's something we have to perhaps address and move forward on. So, thank you.
Trustee Davis?
So, just going back to the global issues, I just wanted to clarify, was there only the one question? The global issues we identified in the survey were climate... the one question, the global issues we identified in the survey were climate change and peace? Or did we ask about other global issues?
Chair Hurdman through to trustee Davis. That was the question verbatim. That was for the global issues, one that came out at 60.4. The question was exactly as I read it. That was it.
So I think there's probably no end of topics you could ask on global issues, and I'm interested as to how those two were chosen.
Chair Hurdman through to trustee Davis. It was part of the literature review that was done in examining how we were going to ask the various questions for the indicators that US trustees had chosen and approved. And so there was an extensive literature review done. I can't remember the date of the report that we presented to you. I can certainly pull that up and send that. But that was a report that we provided you that had a bibliography in it of all of the literature that we looked at. And then based on that, we narrowed down, because as you say, there is a plethora of questions that we could ask. And we are cognizant of, there are a lot of indicators that we have to measure. And so how do we balance asking more than one question, which is what we did before, to try and get a broader understanding of where kids are thinking without inundating them with 200 questions where they stop reading the question? So it is a balance, to be sure.
So now in previous board meetings, we've talked a lot about calibration around our report cards. I was wondering how much work we've done around calibration when it comes to results reporting.
Chair Hurdman, our work to date has been focused on the academic disciplines and hasn't been focused on the results reporting.
Any further questions? Trustee Hare?
If we could look at 417, and the question that's taken a look at there is percentage of high school students who report they appreciate and learn from the perspective of others. And it's 86%, which is, I think, reasonably high. However, that does mean that 14% of our students do not share that view. And I guess this might refer to an understanding of statistics, and I understand my knowledge is somewhat limited, although I have had a couple of classes that I somehow managed to pass. Nonetheless, is this a concern when people take a look at this number, that 14% of our students in public schools, which are open to all and inclusive and accepting of all, 14% of our students may not believe that they have much to gain by listening to the viewpoints of some of their other students?
Chair Hurdman to trustee Hare. I believe that we would want all students to be of an open mind, to be willing to listen to other perspectives. Having said that, I'm not sure that that's a realistic goal for us to expect. Certainly would be one that we would strive to. Not sure we would ever get there. We do have people in society at all ages who are not open to listening to different perspectives. That doesn't mean that we would stop encouraging that kind of openness. And again, I'll just say, this is the first time that we've done this survey. I don't know whether that's going to be something that we see an increase in over time, which would certainly be our hope.
As a one-time university debater, I have to sort of comment that realism and idealism are often matters of debate. And on this one, I think idealism has to win. We have to hope that at some point in time, 100% of our students, 100% of society are tolerant and prepared to accept others and differences of opinions in a reasonable sort of way. As an example, I will go back to the early 60s when President John F. Kennedy said, "We're going to the moon." He didn't say halfway to the moon or 95% of the way we are going to the moon. And I think that's the attitude that we in the public school system should have. 100% of our students will be tolerant and understanding and moving towards a better society. So thank you, and I understand exactly what you're saying. It's a work in progress.
Point of information for trustee Hare, how would you measure that idealism?
Well, I'd first set up a committee, and then we would investigate, and then we'd report back. I'd include principals and presidents of organizations, union representatives, and I'm sure we could come up with something.
If I may, trustee to trustees, as was mentioned by the superintendent, we recognize that this is the first time this survey was administered. And certainly, it serves as a good baseline. And I think as we unpack this information, what we would hope would come out of any instrument or any survey that we administer to our students or to our communities would be the important question of, now what? And I think that's really the value of this information before you in terms of, now we have the baseline, schools have this information, and those good conversations are taking place. And of course, our goal as a district will always be that all students are certainly engaged in these very aspirational, in some situations, goals. But you are right, trustee Hare. We always have to aspire that every single one of our students, as global citizens, whether they're based here in Calgary or they live elsewhere, are impacted by global trends. So I know that was a conversation that happened this morning with our school leaders at Tallas Park. So I'm very encouraged and quite pleased that our school leaders are having these conversations. So thank you for that.
Trustee Hirdlicka?
So one of the things that I really love about many of our reports, in particular citizenship, is the stories from students and students connecting the dots of their learning. And I just have to say, page 4-27, I marked all over these student stories because I think that they were really insightful, because they made connections to different areas of learning that even the average person has a difficulty making those connections. So if you look at the last paragraph on 4-27, when these students came up with this idea of a living wall, and it was really to reduce water waste and to show diversity in the school and to connect with science. Well then, which is incredible, but on top of that, they're looking at using it through smudging as a way to heal the body and mind and soul. So these really, this incredible learning that these kids are able to connect all of these things, this to me shows citizenship at its best. And so I didn't get a chance, but this report and the questions have been very informative. I would also say, I really appreciate the, when we're looking at the evidence strength, exemplary, like the charts that we have, say on 4-22, I really appreciate you breaking those out so we could see where our kids are in regards to their success in the various areas. My kids are in grade two and four. This is what I see. And so I appreciate that. I do have another question, but can I ask that? Okay. It was, my apologies, it's page... I got so excited there. It just seemed like a repeat to me, and I just wanted a clarification.
Chair Hurdman to trustee Hirdlicka, how about if I answer that for you while you find it? So that was a typo in the report. They shouldn't have both been 3.1. 3.1 was the first one, 3.5 was the second.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Trustee Hare?
Yes, I may have a few, and administration can relax because the answer to all of them is yes. So I'll give it to you, I'll give it to you now. I too share trustee Hirdlicka's joy in going through some of these written comments by our students. Because as we all know, education is not about numbers. It's about feelings, emotions, learning, getting along, all those other kinds of things like that. And citizenship is one of those things which is often difficult to measure quantitatively. But we see the results both in the short run and in the long run for our democratic society. So taking a look at this, there's a number of comments that I found quite appreciative because they basically support and acknowledge the role of public schools. And I think, of course, that's our mandate. That's why we're here. And it's part of our mission. And it's a wonderful mission, and it's something that I would certainly hope we all would support. I take a look at the first sort of paragraph of what one of our students put here, and it's the line, "I perceive myself as the odd one out in my school community, and in essence, I never quite felt like I belonged." Couple lines later, "After moving to Calgary, I was amazed to discover an atmosphere of appreciation for cultural diversity, the likes of which I had never before encountered." What a wonderful statement. What a comment that can make us proud to be part of the Calgary Public School District and the mission of the public schools. And would administration agree with that? Makes them proud?
Chair Hurdman to trustee Hare, yes.
Thank you very much. Moving right along, a few paragraphs down, this one here, "At Western Canada High School, I started an AI club." And I have to be honest, I had to think for a minute, what does AI mean? Okay? But it came to me very quickly. "That meets the strong want of high school students to learn about AI through experimental learning and prepare for our AI-integrated future." Once again, our students stepping up, being encouraged, taking the opportunity and moving forward. What a wonderful mandate we have, and the fact that we are encouraging it and seeing it happen has to make us all proud. Would you agree?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Just, I'll just go one final one. We go to the next page, 427. "I have always known that Canada is a very diverse country. Just by looking into my mall, classroom, or public area, you will see countless people from countless countries around the world. But I never truly understood why diversity was a strength until a couple years ago. There was a boy who had just immigrated from Iran, and he spoke just a couple words of English. This was the first time he had ever been outside of his country. Our teacher at the time was very diligent and made sure that he had all the resources to help him. She was worried that he would feel alone or isolated. The exact opposite happened. All the kids in our class were very open and treated him no differently than any other student in our class. The new student fit in right away, and even without speaking a lot of English, he made many friends." Does that make you proud?
Chair Hurdman to trustee Hare, those stories that we hear from our students are exceptional, and they are what we wish for each and every one of our students. And yes, they make us very proud.
Thank you. I'm proud too.
So I guess that was too long for debate, so you had to do it as part of comment this week. Any further questions? So any trustee who wishes to bring forward a motion regarding exception or commendation should provide the motions to the corporate secretary and to all trustees by the end of the day tomorrow, Wednesday, March 6, 2019. And this item will be placed on next week's March 12, 2019 agenda for the board's consideration. So next on our agenda is operational expectations and annual monitoring of OE7, communication with and support for the board. Chief Superintendent Ussy, would you please introduce the report?
Thank you, Madam Chair, trustees. Today, we present the monitoring report for operational expectation seven, communication with and support for the board. This report illustrates our administration supports the work of the Board of Trustees through the timely sharing of information, through monitoring reports, shifts of updates, and other reports. This operational expectation speaks to the importance the Board of Trustees places on information and the need for that information to be relevant to the actions they undertake as a result of this information. The data collected for this monitoring report applies to the 2017-18 school year. We've included specific data for you in this report, which provides evidence that much information was shared in a variety of ways during this timeframe. The evidence presented today indicates compliance with all 10 of the indicators. We're pleased to take any questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. The Board of Trustees has previously reviewed the reasonable interpretation of this OE and approved that the chief superintendent reasonably understands the values underlying this policy and that the indicators previously provided by the chief superintendent are acceptable to the board. So I now invite any trustee who has questions about the report to offer them to the chief superintendent.
I'd like to go to, I'd like to go to page 7. I withdraw. Thank you.
Any questions regarding OE7? It's a really hard one to ask questions on because it's very comprehensive and we're the ones being communicated with, so we should know what we're being communicated with. So seeing no questions, any trustee who wishes to bring forward a motion regarding exceptions to finding the evidence to be in compliance or a motion of commendation for exceptional performance should provide the corporate secretary and all trustees with the proposed motions by the end of the day tomorrow, March 6. If there are no exceptions or commendations, then this item will be placed on the consent agenda for next week's board meeting with the motion that the Board of Trustees approves that the chief superintendent is in compliance with the provisions of operational expectation seven, communication with and support for the board. As our next agenda item is the three-year school capital plan, and I anticipate it to be a little more lengthy, I think we'll take a 10-minute break right now and then come back. Next on our agenda is item 7.1, the three-year school capital plan 2020 to 2023. Chief Superintendent Ussie, would you please introduce the report?
Thank you, Madam Chair, trustees. I will invite Superintendent Burton to speak to this report. Thank you.
Chair Hurdman and Board of Trustees. Today, I'm pleased to present the three-year school capital plan covering the period 2020 to 2023. I'd like to highlight several aspects of this report first. The construction and modernization projects contained within the report are founded upon data derived from the city of Calgary as well as CBE sources and subsequently processed using Board of Trustee-approved prioritization criteria. These past three years has seen the CBE open 23 new schools that have added space for over 17,000 additional students within communities close to where students live. Despite this unprecedented growth in terms of new schools, the CBE system utilization rate currently stands at 85%. And even during these more difficult economic times, student enrollment has continued to grow by approximately 1,800 students every year. Stated in other terms, this is the equivalent of adding three new elementary schools every year or two new middle schools every year or one new high school every year. This fact alone underscores the importance of having the provincial government continue to provide consistent and predictable funding for new schools. I'd also like to draw your attention to the fact that major modernizations of existing CBE schools now figure as the largest ask on this year's capital priorities table. Whereas just a couple of years ago, these made up approximately 20% of the total number of projects being requested. Today, their number figures at over 55% of the total request. This is a reflection of how the many new schools opened these last three years have helped reduce enrollment pressures, being experienced in many areas of the city, while recognizing that with over 50% of CBE schools being 50 years or older, these existing schools also need attention to allow them to continue to be great places to learn for another 50 years. Having conveyed these highlights of the three-year school capital plan, we would be pleased to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Trustees, any questions? Trustee Adams?
I'm looking at page 7-48. And I'm just wondering if you can give us, we have the Auburn Bay Middle School designed funded and the North Calgary High School designed funded. I'm wondering if you can just let us know exactly what designed funded means and if you can maybe give us an update on both of those projects as well.
Chair Hurdman to trustee Adams. So designed funded means that back in March of 2018, when the government announced the approval of these two projects, the only thing that was approved was the design of the schools. And so the actual construction of the schools that are listed on this table as priorities number one and two, or C1 and C-2, they have only been approved for design. And so at the same time as those two projects were approved for design only, we saw Skyview Ranch, K-9 School and Mahogany Elementary School receive full funding. And so at this point in time, in our workings, in our work with Alberta Infrastructure, who are managing these projects on our behalf, really, there is really no difference in the sense that all four projects have seen Alberta Infrastructure select a prime consultant or an architect, if you want, who will be now in the process of starting to prepare preliminary schematic designs. In the coming months, through the months of March, April, May, we should start seeing some engagement that will be occurring with the communities where those schools will be going to solicit input that's required as part of the development process permit application that the city requires for these schools. And ultimately resulting in a complete design that will allow us to go to tender. And that's where the difference will obviously happen. And so in September of 2020, when the design will be completed for those four schools, only two of the four schools that were announced in March 2018, namely again, Mahogany and Skyview Ranch, will be able to proceed to the tender phase. Whereas unless the government announces full construction approval for those two schools, they will not proceed any further. And based on the CBE criteria, they will remain at the top of this table until such time as they do receive that full construction approval.
Trustee Davis?
So I think I may have asked this question before, but as our chair indicated earlier, she couldn't remember the answer and neither can I, so you will bear with me. And it's just around our modernizations. And of course, we ask for modernizations on a school-by-school basis. But we often have similar issues in our schools, especially our older schools. So is it a requirement of Alberta Ed that we do it that way? Or is there an opportunity to come back and say that we need this X number of dollars for? to come back and say that we need this X number of dollars for building envelope condition issues, for example?
Chair Hurdman to trustee Davis. Maybe let, if I could just start by differentiating between the intent of the modernization submissions versus infrastructure maintenance and renewal funding, or IMR funding. And so, when we speak specifically to building components, like replacing a building envelope, the roof, doors, windows, mechanical systems, those are all issues related to the facility condition that the, that Alberta Education would expect would be looked at and taken care of through IMR funding. Whereas the modernization funding is intended specifically to help the facility evolve with the changing programming needs of students. And while we're doing that, certainly because of the disruption that's occurring within the school, and the fact that oftentimes we must open up walls and other areas, it frequently does make a lot of sense to be investing in the facility condition itself as well. And so, you then do see a component of the modernization being to address facility conditions, such as mechanical systems and whatnot. But again, the primary focus is on the programming and the modernizing of the facility to allow it to fulfill another cycle of learning with many generations of students in it. So, having said that, within the submission, it is Alberta Education's expectation that these submissions be done individually in order to address the more unique requirements of various schools, as opposed to having an omnibus submission for a certain type of activity.
So, I guess, you know, maybe you've already answered it, but when I, I know a lot of the, the modernization piece is around our CTS spaces. And there has been, you know, especially with the downturn in the economy, some discussion about the need for additional training for high school students in particular. And so, so it sounds like even if we had were able to, had seen a need for some of these CTS spaces in particular to be upgraded relative to programming in order to address, for example, some of the areas we, we think would be helpful as we, as our students continue on past high school, it doesn't sound like there's necessarily a framework for that to occur under the current way that we submit our funding requests.
Chair Hurdman to trustee Davis, that's correct. The intent here is to look at spreading limited resources as strategically as possible across the, the city, and I would imagine from the province across the province, as they're looking at the, the bigger picture. And so, it isn't necessary a question of improving all of the CTS shops of a specific nature. It's looking at, for example, what the CBE has been doing over the past several years, targeting schools within various sectors of the city to enhance accessibility and maximize opportunities for students in a strategic way, without knowing that we wouldn't have the resources to be able to do every single high school, to, to be able to bring every single one of them up to today's standard.
Trustee Dennis?
Thank you. So, I have a question, I guess, on 717. So, when we look at the requests, and we have the costs that are listed there, now obviously, infrastructure funds, the building of schools, and the modernization of existing schools. So, do they provide some guidance in terms of what that number should look like in terms of those estimates? Because they, you know, provide the funding for it. So, did they provide some guidance? I'm just guessing that obviously, construction costs would look vastly different from region to region in the province. So, I'm just wondering what kind of input they might have around that.
Chair Hurdman to trustee Dennis. Yes, Alberta Infrastructure does have a figure that they use in terms of the total cost per square meter for either construction or modernization. When it comes time, though, to actually deliver on a project, once a project essentially has been approved, it is at that time, then, that those discussions in terms of how much funding will be allocated for that project occur between Alberta Infrastructure and Alberta Education, and it's informed by any work that we may have been doing with Alberta Education and Infrastructure leading up to that. So, for example, in the case of a modernization, we would be going through a value management session led by Alberta Education that would help identify what components of that school need the modernization that would help inform the estimate, and ultimately influence the actual figure that is allocated towards the project.
Trustee Adams?
Just continuing along on modernizations, I actually have a couple of questions, in particular regarding Deefan Baker High School. On page 7-61, in the facility description, you mentioned there are four dated modular units. Can you tell me how old they are?
Chair Hurdman to trustee Davis. So, those four modular classrooms are arranged between the ages of 49 years young to 57 years young. So, there are four of them. I think the two, there are two of them that are 53 years old in amongst the four.
And what is the average lifespan of a modular in general?
Chair Hurdman to trustee Adams. And here, I think I'm going to quote Superintendent Grundy to say, well, how long do you want it to be? Because most certainly, they are not intended to have the same life expectancy that a full-out construction would have. However, with lots of tender love and care, and unfortunately, a lot of money that flows with that, the life can be extended indefinitely essentially, but obviously getting more and more expensive until such point where you pretty well replace all of the building components.
So, I'm just going to continue along that train of thought here. So, with that information, so I'm looking now back at 7-49 of the total capital plan, and how everything's integrated back in with the new builds and with the modernizations. Can you just, I see that we have, not considering the two that are already designed funded, but after that, we have two new builds requests, and then we have three modernization requests in the first year. Can you explain how, how do you choose the order? How does that, how does that get prioritized in there?
Chair Hurdman to trustee Adams. So, the, the new school requests have criteria that are very clearly laid out within this report as well, as the modernizations. And so, again, we have points that are allocated for the modernizations. Now, when we're trying to then bring the two lists together, and that's a little bit of the, the art that occurs at that point in time, we're looking for things like the impact on a community that doesn't have a school, or has a school, but the school is overflowing. And so then, students have a lengthy transportation time in order to be able to get to a school, versus a community that may already have an existing school, and, and of course, the desire to be able to modernize that facility. I think on the, on the plus side within this plan, because of the fact that we have seen a lot of new schools being approved for communities with a lot of enrollment pressures, we've been able to see all of the modernization requests continue to increase in terms of their priority year over year. But certainly, what you see in, in year one, and priorities three and four, the Auburn Bay Elementary and Evanston Middle Schools, really speak there to two communities where we opened brand-new schools just two years ago, and already they're being overflowed, and recognizing the pressures and the desire for parents to have their students, especially when they're very young, as close as possible to a local community school.
Trustee Davis?
So, I appreciate your comment in describing the modulars in years young. As someone who recently celebrated a milestone birthday, I was very much appreciated. Of course, 25 being a very important birthday, I have a long way to go. I just, I had a couple of questions around the high school numbers, and I was just, just wanted to start off, if you could just give a brief update on the high school accommodation planning in terms of where we're, where we're at.
Chair Hurdman to trustee Davis. In terms of the, I think you're referring to the high school engagement and the work that we're doing around that and accommodation planning. So, we've been working a lot with high school principals, members of our learning team and planning. Actually, just met with high school principals yesterday to review a draft of the high school engagement roadmap. So, for those of you who've been involved in other engagement work that we have done, we do produce an engagement roadmap for each of the, of the large-scale engagements, so that we can be very clear on what's in and out of scope. So, we have, we continue to work with, with those folks on that. We have a planning team that's supporting that work. We have gone out for expression of interest on an advisory group to support that. Trustee Dennis will be part of that, and we plan to have our first kickoff meeting in, in early April. We have some short blurb on the website that lets people know that we do plan on, on going out for, for opportunities to, to share views in person and online. We plan to do that in the spring. We'll start with giving a high-level update at the April 11th COSC meeting. As we've talked about before, it is a long-term engagement, and, and so it will take a couple of years to, to complete, but we'll start the conversations in the, in the springtime.
Trustee Hare?
Yeah, I'd like to perhaps ask a series of questions. You know, if I can have a little bit of latitude, I would appreciate it, Madam Chair. They have to do with Altidore School. And I am aware of some of the answers, but I too have a tendency to forget, and having had a milestone birthday last year, ending with a five also, people can understand my concerns. Nonetheless, first question, I notice Altidore School is marked 16 in year three, and this is the 11th year it has been on the three-year capital plan. How does that happen? You're on a, on a three-year plan for 11 years.
Chair Hurdman to trustee Hare. Yes, that's some math happening here today in the Board of Trustees' meeting room. The plan that is compiled by the Calgary Board of Education, utilizing the criteria that has been approved by the Board of Trustees, is just that, it's a plan. And then, it is submitted to the government for approval. And so, at that point in time, we're completely dependent upon those approvals and the funding that come with them, in order to be able to actually realize what we've seen, or what we've laid out within the plan. And over the past many years, what we've seen is an intentional priority placed on the construction of new schools, given the enrollment pressures that existed within the system. And so, what unfortunately has happened for Altidore School then, as a result, is that we've seen many new school requests essentially moving up and onwards through this plan, whereas the Altidore modernization has continued, again, to slowly progress, but it has not yet reached a point where it's, it's been approved by the government. Concurrent with this as well was an intentional focus to initially modernize high schools, in wanting to both support high school, the high school success strategy, and making sure that as students were graduating, they would be able to transition either to post-secondary or the workplace, having been exposed to the, the most modern of, of, of equipment within the CTS areas. And so, what you see, what you saw concurrently within those 23 builds is actually a total of five modernizations occurring in different high schools, intentionally, again, high schools, looking once more, as I was mentioning previously, trying to impact different sectors of the city to ensure accessibility of those programs. The last of those high schools that you now see listed is at priority five, John G. Deefan Baker. And if you look now down the list after that, you will see that where the emphasis is now being placed on this plan is at the elementary school level, correction, at the middle, junior, high school level, level, so that we can ensure that transition between the Career and Technology Foundation, CTF, into the CTS programs that have now been modernized within high schools. So, that has essentially, those have been the, the factors that have impacted the, the middle and junior high school modernizations, and resulted in some very lengthy timeframes that you see here.
Thank you. Just sort of, sort of following up, and, and some, some of my questions may ask for a bit of speculation, and I, I realize you're going to be hesitant to move into that area. But, but I think I hear you say that if Calgary would not have been growing at the rate which we have been growing, and the fact that there was a backlog in regards to construction of schools, then the modernizations may have occurred more quickly, depending upon a whole host of other things.
Chair Hurdman to trustee Hare, that is correct.
Okay, thank you very much. Taking a look to it at Altidore, I noticed the, the cost, which is estimated there, 7,980,000. Essentially, that would be, if, if, if a new school is estimated to be costed at 20 million, we're looking at about 40%. Is that correct? And, and, and I think I read someplace, and help me with this, Superintendent Breton, that when the cost of modernization exceeds a certain percentage of building a new school, then you will simply build a new school. Can you comment on that for me?
Chair Hurdman to trustee Hare, that is also correct. If the investment required in the condition of the facility is more than, and so when I specify facility condition, I'm referring to the overall state of the building, so what the roof, mechanical systems, and those kinds of, of, of building components, their condition. If it's more than 40% of the total value of replacing the school, then typically Alberta Education and Alberta Infrastructure would be looking to replace a school, as opposed to modernizing it and/or investing significant infrastructure maintenance and renewal into it.
Okay, thank you very much. The, the Altidore School, like I've said, is mentioned at 7,900,000. What would that basically encompass? What would you be doing there?
Chair Hurdman to trustee Hare. So, the actual items that would be covered as part of that work would, again, form part, or be developed as part of a value management session that would typically be led by Alberta Education, and informed by educators, as well as support staff, who actually are responsible for the uptake or the, the, the care of the facility, in order to properly identify those things that need to be modernized. So, certainly, in the case of Altidore School, we'd be looking at the overall building layout, whether or not it's, it's still configured in the proper fashion. And then, again, while we're in there disrupting the, the, the school, looking at building components that would be required. Altidore School specifically is currently experiencing some enrollment pressures. Changing the capacity of a school can be a consideration. However, typically, Alberta Education looks at that in terms of reducing the size of a facility in order to adjust to lower enrollment projections going forward. In a circumstance like this school, where the pressure is the opposite, it's, they've got too many students at this point in time. got too many students at this point in time, and where the Calgary Board of Education has another school within walking distance that does not, is not experiencing the same pressures, and so they do have capacity, I would say that with, with quite some confidence that Alberta Education would not consider any sort of expansion to the size of a school or the capacity of a school and under those circumstances.
This will be probably my last question. Superintendent Breton has preempted to some extent my, my, my question here, but I will go forward anyway. When we take a look at the modernization and of course the, the impact on the school, and you've mentioned the, the concern with an increasing enrollment and of course the community there is talks somewhat about modulars and so on, and you've also indicated that the government has certain opinions there too. But I think I heard you say that if moving forward on this modernization, we would still not have a great opportunity to expand the opportunity for an increase in students.
Chair Hurdman to Trustee here, that's correct. The Alberta Education obviously has information in regards to utilization rates within all of our schools as well as system-wide. And in wanting to maximize the impact of those limited dollars that they are entrusted with, will certainly scrutinize very closely what is occurring around that school before approving investment into a school that would change its capacity. And I would say that the same would also hold to, true, through and through for the Calgary Board of Education. We are also entrusted with finite resources and so we must ensure that those resources are used to the maximum impact for students across the city and not in a fashion that might be seen as being biased towards one community or another. And so again, in, in a circumstance where we would end up incurring increased operating costs, because obviously we wouldn't be incurring increased capital costs, this, this kind of work would be paid for by the government of Alberta. However, the Calgary Board of Education, being funded on a per-student allocation methodology, not on a per-building or per-square-meter allocation, would now have to absorb the increased costs of having expanded a school when again, we have available space just down the road essentially.
Thank you.
I have Trustee Hurdlicka, then Dennis, then Davis.
So I have a question around utilization. What would the CBE considered kind of a, a sweet spot where we want to be for utilization across the system? And then I've got just two quick follow-ups.
Chair Hurdman to Trustee Hurdlicka. The utilization rate from a system perspective that we're targeting is a mid-80% range as that would typically allow for opportunities within schools for learning activities that might not be possible if every single area of the school is filled with students that are, are learning. Having said that however, what 100% looks like within one school can be very different in comparison to a, a different school with a different floor layout. And, and you've probably noticed this yourselves as you walk through various schools, some who are above 100% and, and you could see the very fluid and, and natural learning that's happening unconstrained despite the large numbers. And you might end up in a school that's actually a little bit lower in terms of utilization and, and get a feeling that the, that the layout isn't as conducive to, to learning. So it is, it is very different from school to school, but I would say again, from a, a system perspective, we're looking at an 85% zone.
If we look at page 7-80 and we're, or 63, either or, and we look at our capacity for senior high, and right now we're at 88.3%. We know that's probably a little higher than maybe we'd, we'd like for, for high school. I understand that Foundation for the Future, a charter school, is publicly out advocating for a new high school. And with this 88% utilization across the system for high schools, can you give us some background on how charters have in the past received schools from the CBE?
Chair Hurdman to Trustee Hurdlicka. On the issue of Foundations for the Future Charter Academy, in 2011, it's my understanding that at that time, the government directed the Calgary Board of Education to provide a surplus property that the CBE had, namely Montgomery School, to the Charter Academy, to the Charter School for the purpose of their, of their high school. When the Calgary Board of Education is in a position where there is a property it has that is surplus to its needs, after having evaluated a variety of different opportunities that might exist either first and foremost for students, and then afterwards if there are any other system needs that might be accommodated within that facility, those properties are brought to the Board of Trustees for consideration for disposal. And at that point in time, if the Board of Trustees supports disposal of that property, the property is, is submitted to Alberta Education for the minister's consideration. And so that's a requirement under the School Act and it is the minister's authority that is required to declare a property surplus. And it is at that time that the minister then becomes aware of that property and can both identify it for the use by a charter school or as part of the work that they would probably be doing at the provincial level, sharing that opportunity with other government agencies to see whether there might be a need within that particular community for that property. Having gone through that cycle and if in the scenario where there is, there are no such requirements at that point in time, then the minister would be issuing his authority to the Board of Trustees to declare the property surplus. And at that point in time, we end up having to enact a joint use agreement that allows the city's right of first refusal. But really it's at the point in time when we identify the property, you've agreed that it is surplus to our needs, to the CBE's needs, and it's submitted to the, to the minister. At that time, he has the opportunity just to actually redirect the use of that property and require the Calgary Board of Education to retain it and lease it to the, the charter school.
So I guess, thanks for that information. I think that's helpful for, for all of us to understand the process. Previously, how much rent do we get for those leased spaces? And just to reiterate, do we maintain those buildings after they've been surplused and go into the hands of the charter?
Chair Hurdman to Trustee Hurdlicka. As far as how much we used to previously get for those properties, we would, we would be able to charge fair market value. So I'm, I'm just sort of flipping through here in case I happen to see some of the, the values that we used to get. But commencing in, in 2015, 2016, I believe, we received direction from the government that those properties were to be provided to charter schools for the nominal sum of $1 per year. Maintenance is a responsibility, so the day-to-day maintenance is a responsibility of the charter school. However, more important engineered maintenance, if you want to call it that, are, remain the responsibility of the Calgary Board of Education. And so our staff do have to spend time and, and resources inspecting and attending to the conditions of those schools.
Trustee Dennis?
I'm still processing that last answer a little bit. Okay, refocus. I appreciated the information that you provided on 7-6 or six of eight under item number five, financial impact, just outlining the extra funds that the CBE allocates towards outfitting our new schools and then also how you piloted those recurring annual operating costs. And so, I mean clearly the CBE invests a significant amount of money to make sure that those learning spaces are equipped and ready for welcoming students. I also appreciated your answer around how we come up with that estimated cost of, of a building. And so I'm wondering when those conversations happen at the provincial level around coming up with that, what that cost would potentially be to build out that school? Is, how much of that discussion is also about outfitting the school? So we've obviously made the decision that we need to outfit the schools more, more technology, more books, more whatever. Is it a percentage basis? So does the province say, okay, X percent of this estimate is for outfitting a school? How do they contribute to that, to that part? Because when I look at this, I'm going, okay, they're supplying, I'm assuming some furniture, some library books, some band instruments, but we're doing it differently. So is it a percentage basis? Do they have guidelines on saying, this is an envelope of money for furniture and this is an envelope of money for band instruments and an envelope of money for sports equipment? So how do they figure that amount in there and how much flexibility do we have in terms of how we spend that or those envelopes of money?
Chair Hurdman to Trustee Dennis. So there is no discussion that occurs in terms of the FFNE allocation. It is a percentage and it's, the percentage is 9% of the total construction costs and strictly the construction costs, so none of the consultant fees or any of the other, of those kinds of costs. And so as far, as far as the second component of your question, there are very stringent guidelines in terms of what those monies can be expended on and what they can't be expended on. So for example, they cannot be expended on musical instruments, but they can be expended on chairs and, and, and tables and books. It is within the Calgary Board of Education's discretion as to what kinds of chairs and tables and books that we buy, if you want. So there is some latitude there, but of course if we're buying a more expensive table, that means we can maybe buy fewer chairs. But of course, if they're high-standing tables, maybe that's not a problem. But, so it is that give and take that has to happen. It's one that occurs with the educational staff in determining what should be going into that school.
Maybe not so much a follow-up question as maybe a follow-up statement. I, I find that curious, to be totally honest. You know, part of the program of studies is, you know, we have music education, we have literacy, we have all those things. I'm just surprised that they would not fund some of those things under that 9%. But anyway, okay. No question, just curious.
I have Trustee Davis and then Trustee Adams.
So looking at high schools on page 7-21, we see that we are going from a population of about 27,500 to almost 32,500 in 2022. And so what percent utilization are we at today versus what would we be in 2022 if in fact the North High School is not approved for construction funding?
Chair Hurdman to Trustee Davis. In terms of the first part of your question, on the actual utilization rate for our high schools, it's actually identified at page 7-80. So we see there 88.3% is the enrollment for our senior high schools. If we do not see the North Calgary High School approved by 2022, the projection is for 99% utilization. If the North Calgary High School is approved, at that point in time, we would see a utilization rate of 94% system-wide.
Trustee Adams?
Just kind of continuing on that, on page 7-53, talking about the North Calgary High School. In there you mentioned there are over 3,800 high school students living in the north sector of Calgary. And you make reference in the second paragraph, if all high school students living in the north sector were accommodated at John G. Deefenbaker High School, the utilization rate by residents would be 283%. So I'm curious if the high school does in fact get built, have we done projections of what, what the new utilization rate will be for Deefenbaker that's currently at 102?
Chair Hurdman to Trustee Adams. Unfortunately, we haven't conducted any sort of evaluations in terms of by residence. So we don't have that information, certainly something that can be created if, if you're interested in that. But I want to underscore again that it is by residence. And so we do have, and if we go back to page 7-80, a distribution of students that travel out of the sector in question to utilize schools, high schools in other sectors of the city, thereby resulting in utilization rates then that are much better than the 283 that you're seeing specifically for the North Calgary High School area.
Trustee Davis?
So just going back to high schools. So we, over the next five years, we expect about 6,500 more students. We have the, the North High School, which will accommodate about 1,800 of them, but going back to the numbers that you indicated, we're, even with that school built, we're somewhere between 94 and 99%. And so I guess I'm wondering why we don't have another high school on our capital plan?
Chair Hurdman to Trustee Davis. So there are probably two major factors for why that, for why we do not have other high schools currently identified on the three-year school capital plan. The first and foremost being the fact that for Alberta Education to even consider approving a school, the site where it will be constructed must already be serviced. And so at this time, we do not have any other serviced high school sites. Now my team are working on a regular basis with developers to try to influence where we can, the, the servicing of those sites. And so just a couple of weeks ago, for example, up in the northeast, given that that's the next area that we see with the highest pressure in the, the cornerstone area, trying to influence the developer to, to service that site. And then down far south in the West McLeod area, structure plan area, so we're talking right southern limits of the city, another site that we could see becoming available within the next three to five years, becoming serviced within the next three to five years. So what we could very well see is that as soon as one of those two sites is serviced, that suddenly it would leapfrog into year one of the three-year school capital plan, given the enrollment pressures that we're projecting.
So I guess maybe it's a little development lesson time. Can you just help me understand, because obviously these sites are serviced under agreement with the city of Calgary as they complete the subdivision? Correct me if I'm wrong. So what influence, I guess, apart from the developer, would the city have in terms of the timing of servicing some of these sites? Because I'm, I'm very nervous about a 99% occupancy because we are, we're talking about a margin of error that's a margin of error that's, could go either way, as I'm sure, you know, you are as well. So, so help me understand what role the city would have in helping accelerate the servicing of those sites?
Chair Hurdman to trustee Davis. The way that we can influence the city to place pressure upon a developer is through the joint use agreement, and specifically our place at the Joint Use Coordinating Committee. And so at that forum, that is also the forum where new sites are identified, and ultimately as issues from a city planning perspective come up, can be then channeled to the proper authorities within the city of Calgary to place the requisite pressures on developers to assist with what we're seeing in terms of roadblocks, if you want, to allow us to be able to proceed.
Trustee Bradshaw?
Has there been, I guess, anything that's happened in recent memory with any of the boards where sometimes that wasn't possible?
Chair Hurdman to trustee Bradshaw. Yes, in fact, over the last few years, actually, let's just back up to September of 2018, Calgary Board of Education opened John Cardinal Schubert, and what was the Catholic school that opened down there? All Saints? So at that same time, in September 2018, thank you, trustee Bradshaw, the Calgary Catholic School Board opened All Saints. The location of that school was not where it was supposed to be. The Calgary Catholic School Board ended up having to utilize another site that was serviced, not a, not a site that had originally been intended for a high school to be able to accommodate the pressures that they were feeling at that, at that point in time.
Continuing along the same vein of high school pressures, I know that Edmonton Public has started building these mega high schools, 2,400 students, rather than the 1,800s that we're building. And in their capital plan, they're asking for 1,800 student spaces plus an addition later. So is that something that we would consider, say, for the North High School? That when we design it, that it's designed so that it could accommodate another 600 wing, should we want to build it due to lack of high school spaces?
Chair Hurdman. The construction of an addition to an existing facility from a purely facilities perspective ends up costing the same amount, but now you're not as proximate to where students might be. And depending upon the site that has been identified, it might pose additional issues in terms of the actual activity fields available to students. So in having said that, the Calgary Board of Education approach has really been to try to maintain its new high school size to the 1,800 student size, so as to both attempt to maximize the sense of community within that school, as well as, again, trying to avoid having a larger facility that ends up having individuals having to travel for much further distances in order to access the high school in question.
So just to follow up, the answer would be no, that we're not planning a high school that would be able to have an additional wing put on later?
Chair Hurdman, correct. The answer is no.
Trustee Davis?
So in the planning document, we indicate that bus transportation times are a factor we consider. Can you just help me understand what those criteria are and whether those are provincial criteria or our own?
Chair Hurdman to trustee Davis. The criterion in question is a CBE criterion, and it is a matrix that we've developed that factors both the median travel time of students, as well as the distance of the community to that designated school. So the distance can be one thing, but the travel time might be rather short if the community happens to be very well serviced and, you know, highways and/or whatever else, whether it's sea train line, et cetera, that might allow accessibility. So that's how this portion of it is taken into consideration, and certainly more weight is given for younger students. So elementary schools will see this get a more heavy weighting within the divisions of elementary through to middle and high school.
So I just have a question about the nickel modernization being so high on our priority list for modernizations. Is this a school that we are sure that we will need going into the future?
Chair Hurdman, yes. And then I'll expand. So we're seeing development occurring primarily in the northeast and the southeast of the city. And so notwithstanding the new schools that you see identified within the three-year school capital plan for the south, we do see a role, an important one, for nickel school, given its placement and, again, the growth that we're seeing in the south.
Thanks for the concise answer. Just along those same lines, on page 729, I'm wondering why we weren't seeing that southeast utilization by student residents growth over five years, when the city is projecting 27% growth in the southeast? So I'm just wondering why our utilization by student residents growth wouldn't be also showing that?
Chair Hurdman, so what you're seeing there is the influence of the two schools that have been approved by the government but not yet built, and so namely Cranston Elementary School and the Mahogany Elementary School. And so the increase in capacity is allowing for that to, utilization rate to stay stable.
Trustee Davis?
Can you refresh my memory if Forest Lawn is the only modernization to have been announced in the last four years?
Chair Hurdman to trustee Davis. So no, we've actually had a total of five modernizations: Bonneville High School, Jack James, James Fowler, Lord Beaverbrook, and Forest Lawn.
That were announced since 2015 or completed?
My apologies. So I was thinking of the actual delivery. So during that timeframe, the only one that has been approved was the Forest Lawn High School modernization. You're correct.
And just another question, I, just relating to AE cross on the modernization. I know the project cost is shown to be around 18 million, and a middle school, I think, what are we, what are we using, 20? Now I can't find the page I was on. Yeah, so new middle school construction, about 27 million. So would that not put AE cross over that threshold for modernization versus replacement?
Chair Hurdman to trustee Davis. So what I was trying to focus on in my previous answer but didn't come across clearly was that it's really in respect to the facility condition. And so if it was $20 million worth of investment required strictly for the building envelope, mechanical systems, those kinds of building components, then the school would not be considered. This funding is identified for both upgrading the learning environment, as well as a component to then upgrade the facility condition in support of that. And so the facility condition work is well under the 40% threshold, and so allowable as per the Alberta education guidelines.
Trustee Bradshaw?
Can you dive into what upgrading the learning environment might look like?
Chair Hurdman to trustee Bradshaw. So typically, the focus will be on the career and technology foundations and/or the career and technology studies areas for high schools and middle and junior high schools. And so what might that look like? We might be bringing the welding shop up to standards that are used now in industry that weren't used when the facility was originally built. We might be changing the equipment that's being used so that it's more similar and more compatible with what's actually used out in the marketplace or in post-secondary institutions such as SATE. So for, for example, I know that our, our team of educators do go out to SATE and see so what is being used, so that the transition from high school is that much easier. So it's those kinds of enhancements that are done. At the same time, if we have to, in the welding example, it might be an opportunity to also then rip out the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning system and replace it with something modern, better, higher efficiency, and better results as well. So that's what I'm talking about in terms of enhancing the learning environment.
Trustee Davis?
So just going back to these unserviced high school sites, if we asked you to come back with the priority of sites as the next high school, have you already done that work? Or is that something you would need some time to do?
Chair Hurdman to trustee Davis, yes, we've already done that work.
And in terms of the, the time required to service the site, can you give us a rough, a rough estimate, assuming that the plans are not in place if we were starting, if the developer was starting from scratch on that today?
Chair Hurdman to trustee Davis, we could also provide a, an estimate of that time, not right now, not knowing the conditions on the ground as we speak, but yes, we could get an estimate of that timeline.
Trustee Dennis?
All right. So I'm going back just thinking again about when we're outfitting schools, and so the extra money that we invest beyond what we receive when we're building the schools. So, and Madam Chair, if you think this question is better saved till when we're talking about budget, then just tell me so, and I'll save it. But I'm curious about then, when we are outfitting the schools to make sure that resources are in kids' hands, right, so we're maximizing their, their learning opportunities. Do we have a way, because obviously, we can always use, there's endless amount of money we could spend on, on resourcing schools to the maximum benefit of students. Do we have an opportunity, you know, so they don't provide, there's not funding provided provincially for band instruments, which can be extremely expensive when we're opening up a new school? Or, for example, even, you know, Nelson Mandela has a aircraft engineering option or, so if somebody wanted to donate band instruments or donate, you know, a fuselage of a plane or something for those programs, right? Donate cars for automotive or whatever it is. Do we have a way to accept those donations and provide a tax receipt for donations in kind?
Chair Hurdman to trustee Dennis, yes, and it's captured under Administrative Regulation 7009. And yes, there is a provision within that for tax receipts.
All right. So when we're trying to outfit schools, if anybody out there is listening has something awesome to donate, we can maybe take it and provide you with a tax receipt commercial. Thank you.
And looking at future projections on page 7-12, where we look at the city of Calgary's projections for the city's population, and then we look at our student population, it looks like ours are a lot more conservative than the city of Calgary. Is there a particular reason for that?
Chair Hurdman, I'd say there's probably two primary factors that influence the difference in the angle of the slope that you're seeing on those two graphs. So the city is projecting growth. On that page, you see the, the chart that that, the line that that provides at a certain rate. However, when the Calgary Board of Education looks at city census data, what we're finding is that that growth is occurring due to adults immigrating to the city, and they're not necessarily having a lot of kids. And so first and foremost, then, the result that the slope on the Calgary Board of Education line is a little bit lower is the fact that we're not seeing the students in the preschool census data. Secondly, there's another little element that's impacting that. In 2020, given Bill 28 that adjusted the common age of entry into school to being five years of age on December 31st, what that means is that we would typically have between 600 to 800 students that would be younger but admitted into schools. Now those, for one year, will have to wait an additional year. So in 2020, we're seeing a drop in enrollment in our projections that will then ultimately be shifted to the subsequent years. And then I would maybe just also add the fact that, you know, the mechanism under which we are, the Calgary Board of Education and every other school jurisdiction in the school is funded, is one on a per-student allocation. That is only determined at the end of September of the, of the commencement of that school year. However, in order to be able to have schools properly resourced and not end up having to unfortunately remove resources from schools, it also encourages a certain degree of conservatism within our estimates, so that if anything, then we're in a position in the fall to actually be able to inject additional resources into schools as opposed to having to do the, the opposite.
Any further questions? Thank you very much, everyone, for answering our questions so well. This item will be placed on next week's March 12, 2019 agenda for the board's consideration. The board now has three land, one legal and one strategic governance matters to deal with in camera following the public portion of this meeting. And that brings us to the conclusion of this portion of the agenda. I'd like to thank all of you who joined us for this meeting. And our next public board meeting is scheduled for next Tuesday, March 12, 2019.